Should we invite Orion?
Yeah.
Maybe they are coming for this.
It's locked, isn't it?
Yep, ready to go. Thanks. Good evening and welcome to the March twentieth Town Council meeting. And I'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on, Council Weinstein cannot be attended tonight, but she is on the phone. I'm gonna ask a few questions. First, was it un- was it improbable for you to attend this evening?
Yes, it was.
And is there anybody in the room with you?
No, there's not.
Is there any objection from the council that Council Weinstein participate by phone?
No.
Um, people wonder why I'm starting the meeting, 'cause we've, uh, it's an organizational meeting and we do not have a chair at this time. So, the first item is to election of the chair. And I would ask that an individual nominate, uh, somebody for the position of chair. And then a second, if there is more than one nomination, then we'll go through with each individual candidate and you'll say your preference. And if the individual gets a majority, then individual wins. If not, we'll keep going until somebody does. Counselor.
I would move to nominate Tony Weinstein as chair.
Second.
I'm hoping she heard me.
I did.
How lovely.
So, motion by Council Dumont, second by Council Finch. Are there any other nominations? Seeing that, I'll call the roll. Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Do- Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Burton?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Do you want-
Counsel Kuiper.
What?
Did you get-
Yes.
He did me before.
Yeah. Um, Counsel, uh, Madam Chair, do you want me to do the election of the vice chair, then the vice chair runs the meeting?
I think that'd probably be best.
Okay.
Sorry that I can't be there.
Okay. Uh, the second item is the election of a vice chair. I'll accept the nomination for vice, the same way as for the chair.
I have a question.
Sure.
Would Counselor Burns be open to a nomination for vice chair?
Uh, sure, yes.
I would move to nominate Amy Burns as the vice chair.
Thank you.
Is there a sec-
I'll second that.
Second by co- chair? Any other nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Casey Finch for vice chair.
Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing that, when I call your name, you'll state your preferred candidate. And if nobody gets a majority, then we'll go again. We'll do this the second time. Counsel Finch, who's your per- preference?
Uh, Finch.
Counsel Sanders, who's your preference?
Amy Burns.
Counsel Kuiper, who's your preference?
Uh, Casey Finch.
Counsel Dumont, who's your preference?
Counselor Burns.
Counsel Cast, who's your preference?
Uh, Counsel Finch.
Counsel Burns, who's your preference?
Counsel Burns.
Counsel Weinstein, who's your preference?
Uh, Counselor Burns.
Counsel Burns elected vice chair, uh, four votes to three. So, turn over the meeting to the vice chair.
All right. Uh, next on the agenda is the adoption of the Town Council rules for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. I seek a motion to approve the Town Council rules for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The town administrator will discuss.
First, I need you to make a motion. Second.
Oh, sorry.
Somebody, uh, you have to make a motion. I can't watch.
I would move that we adopt the Town Council's, uh, per- sorry, what is it? Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, the town is-
There is one recommended change, and this would be under section thirteen, permission to address the Town Council for public forum. Uh, currently under room order four, says each speaker shall be provided a single opportunity for comment limited to five minutes, with the five minutes beginning after the obligatory statement of name and address for the s- by the speaker. Uh, reviewing what other communities use for a rule. It's three minutes per speaker, and also they put a limit of fifteen minutes total per public forum. That way, 'cause remember, the council meeting is the business meeting of the council. And if you don't have a time limit on the public forum, you could be here for hours and not get the business portion done. Uh, so that just, it, it's not to limit speech, but it's allow you as a council to get the business done. If you wanna suspend it, you can, the council has a right to suspend it, to go past five minutes or fifteen minutes. But this just gives the opportunity to make sure it's concise in a period of time. That's, if the council has no objection.
No.
To that change. Okay, so the council rule now read effective tonight that each speaker shall be provided a single opportunity for comment limited three minutes, with a limit, with three minutes beginning after the obligatory statement, and public forum shall not last more than fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
To clarify, it's under, uh, section thirty, you know?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I have one question.
I wanna-
Oops, sorry.
Oh.
Madam Chair?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, so, I don't have any objection to that. I think that that's, it makes a lot of sense. Um, and I think it's also important to note that we can always suspend the rules. So, that was my only comment about that. And I have another question about a, a different section. Um, section eight, which is filing with the town clerk. The first, uh, paragraph is just, reading it just felt very dated. I don't know that we, um, we use that rule anymore. So, um, it says, um, per section of the town charter, any ordinance or resolution may be introduced by any member at any regular or special meeting of the council, which is, that is true. Um, but then it says upon introduction of any ordinance, the town clerk shall distribute a copy to each counselor and to the town administrator, um, shall file a reasonable number of copies in the office of the town clerk. So, that sentence is just, it's just not the way that we operate anymore. So, I didn't know if we wanted to change that.
Let me double check, 'cause if, I gotta remember if we changed the charter to remove that provision.
Right.
If it's-
'Cause then the next, the next paragraph is, i- is, is much more in line with how we actually operate.
Actually, we did change it. The town administrator, uh, his designee shall distribute a copy.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can just change it the way that is worded as well. Filing with the town administrator's office is what we can call it.
Okay. Was there any other discussion and-
Well, I just wanted to, uh, in section six, under ordinances and resolutions, uh, part C, was that what we added, uh, last year, I think it was?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the two changes are public forum and the filing of ordinances and resolutions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, can these rules only be agreed upon annually?
Nope.
Or can they be amended at any time?
Amended anytime. This is council rules.
Alright.
And that's, Counsel Finch just mentioned that about the changing of the refiling of an ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, is this, do we have to vote on this part, or is it just change?
If the council agrees to, I don't think what we-
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Those are the two changes.
Okay. Alright, then the next on our-
Oh, we gotta call the roll. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You have to vote on the whole thing, not the amendment.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Counsel Finch?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper?
Aye.
Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Cast?
Aye.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Next on the agenda, are we going to, well, next on the agenda is the Town Council committee assignments. Um, with the new members and Counsel Weinstein, um, calling in this evening. Wondering if we might wanna push those to the next meeting, or do you wanna go ahead and do those this evening?
I'd like to proceed.
Okay.
If somebody's really needs more time to think about it.
Nope, just a question and, no.
Thanks for-
Yeah, I'd like to tell you as well.
Okay.
Alright. So, we'll go ahead with the committee assignments. Um, Steve, did you, we wanna just go down a list and see-
Sure. The, you all have a list of the previous year's assignments.
Mm-hmm.
The McAllen Dam Committee has actually sunsetted.
Mm-hmm.
The ordinance that was adopted stated as soon as the final reports passed that it would be, the committee would no longer exist. So, it's passed, committee's not there any longer.
Right.
We do have a question regarding that, um, on election day, there was some, uh, discussion about, um, how we receive reports regarding progress with GZA. Um, just in general, 'cause obviously we have one whole body-
Mm-hmm.
Who's really just been spearheading this project for the past, you know, time. Um, moving forward, can we just expect regular updates from you?
You'll get it from staff?
Yep. Okay. Alright, that works for me.
Okay. Um, so I think in the past, the way we've done this is just kind of gone around and said the preferences and then taken it from there. So, do you wanna, Counsel Finch, do you wanna go ahead and start?
Um, I personally like where I am with the Conservation Commission, 'cause I've got some projects that I'm working on. We just seeded a full, uh, commission, which is nice too. And I would be okay with serving as the alternate to Budget Committee, as I currently am as well.
Okay.
But I'm flexible with the alternates.
Okay. Alright, Counsel Sanders, do you have any preference?
Um, at the moment, I'd like to see what the returning members would want to do, and then I'll see what's left.
Alright, very good. Alright, Counsel Dumont?
I'm okay where I am with Budget Committee. However, somebody else who's maybe itching to get in.
Okay.
More than free to put their name up, but I'm happy, uh, serving there.
Alright.
And, um, just to have further clarification on highway safety again, did they meet at all?
We met, uh, this year to review the church, uh, street one-way, as well as the chapel street one-way.
Okay.
So, we, it's more we meet when need be.
That's fair. Could I expand on for that a little bit? Um, I'm wondering, Counselor Cast has mentioned potentially there might be a review of the master plan regarding transportation, um, section of the charter. I'm wondering if that might fall under highway safety?
It does not. This is for view-
That's more just day-to-day changes?
Right, this is, yeah, this is literally to review, okay, do we need a stop sign at this location?
That was my thought. I just wasn't sure if they'd overlap.
Right, and most of the individuals on the committee are staff.
Okay.
So.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, so we've got Counsel Finch, alright, I'm sorry, Counsel Dumont with budget and Counsel Finch with conservation.
I was gonna volunteer for highway safety. I live downtown and could go view any roads quickly need be.
Okay. Alright, and Counsel Cast?
Gosh, believe it or not, I, I enjoyed both CIP and planning board, but I don't wanna do both.
Okay. What's your preference?
Um, I, I guess, I thought I was gonna say CIP, but planning board's got some really interesting stuff coming up, so.
Okay.
I guess I'll say planning board.
Alright.
An alternate for CIP, I guess, just like last year.
Okay.
I'm sure for that.
Alright, so we have CIP and we have economic development as well, right?
Yeah, and they're pretty dormant right now.
Okay. Um, so Counsel Sanders will circle back to, maybe?
Did we wanna ask, um, Counsel Weinstein what she want, wanted to do?
Counsel Weinstein, do you have a preference?
Um, to be honest, I don't at this point.
Okay.
Partly because I don't know, um, how the responsibilities of chair will affect kind of what I'm able to do. But, I mean, energy and environment, I would, um, certainly continue to do. I would continue to do, I would be interested in, uh, helping with the CIP. And so I'm pretty flexible, I guess, um, depending on where things are, uh, where things shake out with the other counselors.
Okay.
I ju- I remember economic development, the other aspect of that is there is the liaison to the Business Association.
Oh.
So, it's not just the Economic Development Committee, it's also the committee, so.
Is that gonna, I'm sorry, is that gonna, um, tie in with the, the economic development?
No.
Ever that we're got?
That's different.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't, they don't touch it all?
Not any longer, no.
Okay.
We got to this point because of the committee.
Because of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Could that potentially, um, tie into our discussions around parking? 'Cause I do believe that ca- when Counselor Bowden, uh, was the representative, that he, uh, he did assist with that. So, is that something that the, that that position would address?
It could.
Yeah.
So, my understanding then is the economic development person would be the liaison to the Business Association?
Yep.
Correct.
Uh, yeah, if nobody else would like to do that, I'd like to.
Alright.
CIP.
Um, I'm o- I, I'm okay with continuing the CIP for next year?
May I recommend that one of the new counselors serve as an alternate?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's a great learning.
It is.
It is.
I can be an alternate to the CIP.
Okay. Alright, then Counsel Weinstein, I think that leaves Energy and Environment Committee. You're okay with that?
Sure. Yep.
Alright, great.
Do we have anyone volunteer for an alternate for planning board?
I was just about to ask, actually.
No.
That would be a good idea.
You do need an alternate, yeah.
Yeah.
Assuming no objections from Counselor Cast, I'll serve as her alternate on planning board.
Okay, so then Counsel Dumont for the alternate to planning board?
Yep.
I had a feeling it was his schedule, so.
I think that is all of them.
So, we have Finch, Conservation Commission, Sanders on, um, business. I know it's economic law and business. Kuiper Highway in alternate to CIP. Okay, Dumont, budget and alternate to planning board.
Mm-hmm.
Cast, planning board. Burns, CIP.
Mm-hmm.
Weinstein, energy.
Alright.
Did I have you as the-
Alternate to-
Budget Committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Steve, I have one request.
Yep.
I, I think I noticed at some point in the last year that this wasn't updated on the website.
I'll make sure it is.
And sometimes I forgot what I was an alternate for.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so next on the agenda is public forum. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Just to clarify, I don't know if you heard, the council rules have changed since the last meeting. It's a three-minute time limit as of a few minutes ago.
Um, my name's Adam. I live at Sixth Central Street with my wife and two kids. I'm gonna be reading a statement from Zunka Dormblut, who lives at three fifty-one Watley Falls Road. Um, goes like this. He couldn't be here today, so I'm gonna read it for him. Uh, "Dear Council Chair and Council Members, I would like politely ask the Town Council to explain to the citizens of Newmarket why the town is continuing to pursue a weed control program that includes the use of a proven carcinogen. Why would we use a substance on our municipal sidewalks and in our parking lots that has been judged to contribute to cancer? The Town Council, as the legislative and executive body of Newmarket, has a duty to protect and enable the health and welfare of town residents, town resources, and indeed, the very environment we live in. There are different measures and tools to ensure our health and welfare, financial health being a bit easier to observe because we keep excellent financial records that tell a story of our town. Public health is a bit more elusive a concept because we don't have such ready access to solid records and data. Environmental health may be even more difficult to frame and present. I would suggest it is therefore even more important to exercise restraint and use of the precautionary principle when it comes to public health and environmental health. We should not use glyphosate and contribute to the poisoning of our own environment. This is an opportunity to be proactive and not introduce additional carcinogenic substances to our soils and our watershed. Thank you for listening and for your work to keep Newmarket healthy and prosperous. I look forward to your answer. Signed, Zunka." Thanks a lot.
I'm John DiOrio. I'm on one ninety-one Bay Road. Uh, I have heard that the town intends to continue to use Roundup. And wanna read something to you right quick. Uh, the last time I was here, I was talking about a trial that happened last August and, um, a school groundskeeper was successful in his suit against Monsanto to the tune of seventy-eight million dollars. Something was released on March nineteenth in San Francisco. A man who said his cancer was caused by exposure to Roundup. Further evidence that glyphosate, the herbicide's active ingredient, is carcinogenic. Um, today's verdict reinforces what another jury found last year, that, um, glyphosate causes cancer in people. Um, as similar lawsuits mount, the evidence will grow that Roundup is not safe and that the company has tried to cover it up. The thing about this particular case is that the judge allowed, um, documents from Monsanto, internal documents that show that Monsanto knew there was something wrong with it and covered it up and that they have people on the EPA who are in their pocket. Um, you will probably persist in using Monsanto's, um, Roundup. If you're going to do that, I would ask that the town be not- that the town send notification each time they spray, where they spray, and you're supposed to put signs up saying that the area has been sprayed. That is a common practice with any lawn care place. Anything that says side means the person has to be licensed, they have to put signage up. We need to know this stuff. People need to know what areas to avoid. That's all I have to say today.
Is there anybody else? Oh.
My name's Finley, and I live on Ham Street. And I want to save the bees. And I, um... Think that we should stop spraying chemicals and plant more flowers. Because if the bees die, eh, we die too.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Apparently we do.
Okay.
Yes, my name's Peter Satell. Live at eighteen Bay Road, uh, with my wife and four kids who are here. Um, I also own and operate Seven Rivers Paddling in Newmarket. Um, so I'm here on behalf of my kids and the community, um, community children. Hang on, sorry. I think I'll still make it within the three, new three minutes here. Um, to just, again, raise concerns about these concert- cancer-causing agents, um, that I've recently learned about um, in this weed control that's being spread in our community. Um, I think it's just really important that we take care of our community and that we don't use these agents. If we know that there's alternatives, um, I think we should seek alternatives. Um, and I don't think we can really put a price tag on, here they are, like the well-being of our children. Um, and so if it's money, if it's just time and resources, I think as a community, we really need to make that effort to figure out how to do some different weeding or whatever needs to happen. But, um, yeah, you know, all this stuff goes right into that river too. Um, and I've been doing a lot of stuff about saving Great Bay. Um, and Evelyn Brown, there's all sorts of people that have protected our bay from onassis. And if all that work, and then we're just gonna throw cancer-causing pesticides in, it's kind of a, gonna be a waste. So, um, I appreciate all of your time and everything that you do. Um, and I hope that you're all able to make the right decision or make some changes so that it can be a little safer. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we'll close public forum at seven twenty-four.
We have one more speaker.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Two more.
Two more? Okay. Thank you.
And you have, there's only five minutes left in public forum.
Okay, so I will take three minutes of that five minutes. Um, so, there, materials in your, um, uh, agenda for tonight, or the packet for tonight's meeting, go over that the town, um, has looked into this already. There's a report from an entomologist and from the Newmarket Department of Public Works about glyphosate. And I'm sorry, I didn't say Monica Christofle. I live at Sixth Central. You've heard from me many times before. Um, and so all of these reports and everything explain that alternatives to glyphosate are expensive and labor-intensive. Steam and burning application alternatives are incitely and alarming to the public. Um, and then the administrator's, uh, support of, uh, summary of all of these reports basically says that, you know, there is an alternative with the company we contract with, but it would be too expensive, and so we're just gonna stick with glyphosate. Um, and I, I feel like, it's sort of like a, a false issue that we have to pick between glyphosate or this alternative with the company we contract with. We don't have to contract with the company that we're currently contracted with. We don't have to stop at steam and burning applications being alarming to the public. Um, there's been this push-pull of people I've talked in the community, that we're supposed to engage with the Town Council, and we're trying, um, but then we're not getting a lot of engagement back. We are in some areas with a lot of effort spent on your parts, I know that. But there's been pamphlets sent out about the dam, there's been pamphlets sent out about the water treatment system. How about a, a survey that goes out about glyphosate? How about asking the community what they want? We are allowed to vote on budgetary issues. Shouldn't it be up to us if we wanna spend more on alternative and not just another chemical that's also a persistent chemical? Um, shouldn't it be up to us if we're worried about steam application, if it bothers us? Um, ultimately, the, it's not okay for it to just end with, it's too much money, we're contracted with this one company, there's no other options. The people don't want this chemical in our community. Something has to happen. Um, we need to look more closely at the town charter, I guess, to figure out what our next option is. But the reports have been done great. It, it can't just end with, it's too much money. There's more than that. And I'll let the last person have her, the last one or two minutes. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Maggie Shire. I'm from thirty-nine Exeter Road, five-year resident of Newmarket. And for ten years, I've been coordinating the community garden out on Dame Road. Uh, I just wanna echo everything that everybody has already said. I don't wanna take up any more of your time. But I also am very, very strongly opposed to the use of this chemical. I feel like there's plenty of research and evidence to show that this is not something we should be using anymore. There are lists of countries, cities, states that have banned it already should be, um, something for us to take into consideration as not wanting to be on the wrong side of history and poisoning our residents. Um, as a beekeeper, I'm also especially hopeful that we will stop spraying it in our town where my bees can go forage from plants that have been sprayed with them and have been struggling because I keep them organically and without the use of, um, chemical aids in their hives. It's been really hard to do that because of access to these things that are known to be deadly to bees. So, just wanna say I hope that you guys can see that there are other ways to get rid of weeds on the streets. Don't think that it's a worthy cause for something so harsh and, um, known to be so deadly and harmful to our ecosystems and ourselves. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, we will now close public forum at seven twenty-eight, I believe. And, um, Steve, can I just ask, uh, it's my understanding we're still talking about this?
Yeah.
Yes, has, decision has not been made?
Contrary to what has been said, I've been made no decision.
Yeah.
I'm just giving information.
Yeah.
But I think you may, some people may wanna stay for the next portion about how the government's forum and how we do it. 'Cause that may be informational too for the public, 'cause that's gonna be coming up for Town Council orientation.
Okay.
After minutes.
Alright, so, next item on the agenda. All right, so, next item on the agenda is the public hearing.
Yeah, I know.
No, okay. And then, so now we will go ahead and consider to accept the minutes from the March sixth, twenty nineteen meeting. Seek a motion.
Move that we accept the minutes in the March sixth meeting.
Okay, and a second from somebody? Do we have a second?
I mean, it's a second. I'll second. Any, the administration.
Any more disc- any discussion, any changing?
Okay.
Okay, put that.
Counsel Finch.
Abstain.
Counsel Sanders.
Um, I guess I abstain because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Counsel Kuiper.
Uh, aye.
The right to vote, yes. Counsel, do you want? Counsel Cast.
Abstain.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Oh, sorry, aye.
Motion passes four zero to three.
Okay, all right. Next on the agenda is the report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. My, I'm gonna take this out of order and I'm gonna start with the council orientation slideshow. And this is an opportunity for the new counselors to learn the relationship between the council, the people, the town administrator and the staff. It's also a good refresher for the other counselors as well as the public. So the first thing is, the town council serves as a legislative and governing body of the town. In corporate world, the shareholders would be the residents and the voters. The town council's the board of directors and the town administrator's the chief executive officer. Town councils are not select boards. First thing to get and to remember, everyone thinks it's a board of selectmen. They are not select boards. Town councils have some authority of the select board. The town administrator has the other authority of the select board. The town charter says the council has all powers of city councils except to adopt the budget. State law says council has all powers of selectmen, city councils and aldermen. And all actions of a city apply to the town council. So realize that New Market is closer in government to Dover and Portsmouth than it is to Exeter and Hampton. That's our former government. We're a council-manager form of government. It's a representative form of government. The role of the town council with the town administrator. The town council cannot get involved in the day-to-day operations of the town. The town council approves a chief executive officer pursuant to RSA forty-nine D colon two. The town administrator has all authorities of town manager according to town charter and state law. They appoint, with town council approval, all department heads, disciplines employees, including termination, proposes a budget in the CIP of the town council, and there's a full list of all the duties because it's about two pages in the town charter. The town council makes policy. The town administrator and the staff carry the policies out. The town council must only act as a body. No one town counselor can influence the acts of the town administrator or any other employee, direct the appointment or termination of an employee, or interfere with the duties of an employee. Councilors must deal with employees through the town administration. This is one of the very few things that a violation is actually forfeiture of office. So if there's a violation of that, you have to resign the position. The town council must adopt all laws of the town. People think, as in other towns, that they could petition and put it on the warrant for laws. We cannot. We are a representative form of government. This is a legislative body. The town council has budgetary control. The municipal budget committee in town meeting only approve the bottom line of the budget. What's that mean? If we need to move money from one department to another, I have to come to the town council to request permission to do so. The budget committee has no authority over any of those figures there. They just set the bottom line. So if the county council wants to move money from one department to the other, budget committee cannot say yea or nay or could reduce anything after. The town administrator's financial responsibility. Town administrator must approve all mani- any manifest for payments. I establish the purchasing code and the town administrator points to town, appoints the town treasurer. Things that you should realize as a town council, you're on a team. You represent the community at all times. You're doing this for public service, not for benefit personally, politically or professionally. And one of the big things, and I always try to explain this, you cannot turn off being a town counselor. One of the things I always hear in this comment is, well, I'm not a counselor right now. Well, first thing, if you're talking to a department head, you say, I'm not a counselor right now, you're highlighting that you're a counselor. And you can't turn it off. You can't go discuss it with somebody and say, I'm not a counselor this morning. You've entered the public forum, you are now in the public life until your term ends. So there's certain rules that we have to follow. Just some town council relations with each other. One is set long-term and short-term goals and objectives as a team. We will be doing that. We will have a facilitator probably within a month or so. They'll come in and meet with the council, will review the goals that they set last year, and then see what we've achieved, and then go forward with the next goals for the coming year. Be good listeners and be good, good team players. Disagree without being disagreeable. Treat each other and staff with respect despite differences of opinion. Make decisions after all facts have been presented and discussed and refrain from snap judgments. One of the things I'll say there is, you may hear comments at one meeting. I will usually request, do not make a decision tonight, let me get with staff, do studies, and then come back with the information. Because snap decisions, just, it's not good governing. And realize that the actions of the council as a whole are bindings and no one counselor can act alone. So if somebody's out in the public and says, well, we'll do this, it doesn't mean that we'll do, the town will actually do it. It has to be, only the council as a body can act. The role of the town council chair, first among equals. They have no more or less authority than other counselors. They run the meetings and assist the council in reaching decisions and moving discussions forward. They act as a liaison between the council and the town administrator. And if there's conflicts, they help resolve the, them between the two. And they're also the ceremonial head of the town government. And here's an important one, the town council relationship with staff. Do not micromanage. Let the town administrator and department heads run the day-to-day operations. Recognize and support the administrative chain of command, which is, I work for the council, the council, the department heads work for me, and then we go from there. Do not undermine the staff. If there is an issue, you need to tell the town administrator. Because we can't solve the problem if we don't know there's an issue with staff. And recognize that staff and myself, we have a difficult time trying to satisfy the first council. Look, I've got seven bosses. So I have to figure out and juggle seven different priorities and work that way. And so just realize that we work hard to make sure we try to solve the goals of the council. And one thing is also, is try to get answers from myself prior to a meeting. Or as I say, we don't like to play gotcha. It's not fair to myself, it's not fair to the council, it's not fair to the department heads that we'll go to a meeting and you may have this idea for an answer already, but we may not have the, all the information in front of us. So please, reach out to myself and we can get the answers. You'll get your packets on Friday. You have plenty of time to reach out to us. We'll try to get you the information beforehand. Just to let everyone know, too, that when it comes to communicating with department heads, if any counselor talks to the department head nine times, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, I'll know about it. I'm either CC'd on the reply or the department head will talk to me. The reason why is, we don't want any counselor to have more or less information than another one. So if there's something large that's, that's coming up, we want to make sure the entire, you know, the entire council has the information because you may all have the same question. So it's, try to find that information. And the department heads also know that they will CC me on any decisions. On the flip side as well, if I get a question from, say, a school board member, I CC the superintendent of schools. And if I get a question from a department head, I'll CC them so they're informed so that it may be coming up. The role of town council is not to deal with the staff except for basic inquiries or praise. All local government matters should be funneled, as we said, through the town administrator. Call for responses to questions, complaints and concerns. And department heads may, as I said, answer questions, but they'll let me know that they're discussing it. The council's only to deal with the town attorney through the town administrator or the council as a whole. And usually then when it's the council as a whole, that means there's something wrong with the town administrator and hopefully we won't get to that point. And avoid giving different, giving the town administrator staff mixed signals from different counselors. Like I said, it's difficult working for seven. If one person says, well, you know, I know we adopted that, but I don't agree with it. Try to do this. Well, we go by what was adopted by the council or what the policies are in place. So you can't turn that off and on either. Just some general information, the council meets on the first and third Wednesday of the month. The agenda closes at noon on the Wednesday prior to a meeting. No topic may be placed on an agenda unless it's an emergency after that time, and we are very strict on that. I know department heads are not happy sometimes when we say that. Sorry, you're not ready to go on the agenda, but that's the rule. They should not accept items at a meeting that the staff does not have time to review. We don't know what the facts are or what's being presented. And as I said, packets are available Friday before. Council only votes on really two main items. You may have nominations and appointments or approval of minutes, but there, everything you vote on are either ordinances, which are the laws adopted by the town council, or resolutions, which are policies and positions adopted by the town council. So there's usually not any other types of motions except those two pieces, and that's by town charter. And that is the presentation of orientation. I will be having more documents with the two new counselors, like stacks of books. A lot of it will be state and local right-to-know law, roles of councils on the state level, more general overview. You'll be having that shortly. In addition, you are now all, part of New Hampshire Municipal Association. They do have training for local officials, for councils. I believe they are gonna do that in May. And more than welcome to sign up for that or any other training that's out there. They just have their training for budgets, municipal planning law, anything like that. We will pay for the counselors to attend that. So you'll be receiving notices and your emails from the Municipal Association. Any questions on the orientation or any questions about our organization, how we work? Again, I encourage the new counselors to set up meetings to tour all the departments so you can see the operations and we'll be sending out those emails shortly. Now, Madam Vice Chair, my written report, first item is the weed control options. I've had the Director of Public Works, where we're a contracted weed maintenance company, look at options we may have for weed control. Currently, we use a product that has glypho- glyphosate in it. It's the most commonly used herbicide in the world. Recently, it has had a lot of negative press. And it was recent in last night. It's still registered by the EPA as an herbicide that can be used on pavements. It will be applied, currently it's being applied once a month and we're scheduled to do it July nineteenth, July two thousand nineteen, August two thousand nineteen, September two thousand nineteen, and June of two thousand twenty. All designated areas are completed in one working day each month. The four applications are nine hu- nine hundred ninety-five dollars and the total three thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. I provided the council with a list of other options. If the council wants to review other options further, we're more than willing to do that. I just wanted to make sure that you understood what we do as our system for now. If the council wants, this may be something to send to the Environment and Energy Committee since the individual's not here and they put it off on her.
What happens when you're not.
But it's, I don't, I, I don't like this misconception that staff made a decision. Staff is currently doing what we're doing and we're providing the information to the council and we're looking into it as well. We can tell you that the city of Portsmouth, the cities of Dover, have both tried other methods and are going back to the glyphosate. So we're gonna, we're gonna try it, but we just want to make sure that we're not, it's, we're not being vilified out there saying, oh, you're definitely doing it. And we're just providing the facts at this point.
Can you comment on, um, on notifying residents when such spring occurs? If we, you know, just add that into your, the plan on what you can do about that.
I can talk to the company. I'm not sure how their scheduling is. I'll talk to public works director. But if we did, we'd probably just put it on the website.
Well, I'm saying.
Because I think you understand that when we, when we're talking what we do, it's not that we go to a lawn, treat it. We're driving down the sidewalk, there's a patch of grass in the asphalt. And the reason why we do that is because we don't want the grass coming out and cracking it further. We spray it and move to the next one, what the company does. So if we did that, you'd have to put these signs all over downtown. So if we know, we have to do a more general notification.
So I'm just asking for a plan and some options to, that are.
And, right, and my suggestion.
Maybe more than one, you know, that's workable.
Yeah, my other, the only other options would be post-it paper, but that's.
You don't have to come up with stuff right now. Just say, just incorporate that in the.
But I just want to know our, how our hands are tied as well.
Do you know what the actual quantity is that they use every time?
But suppose that that depends on the size of the patch of what they're actually going after, yeah?
It's, I mean, I don't know what the, the mixture that they use off the top of my head. I mean, it's, when I see them, it's literally just a little spray bottle and they just spray that one little patch and move on.
And all the contracts go from July first to June thirty fifth, right?
And I, and I don't want to, and like I said, this company we have a contract with, they're more than willing to look at other options. They're not saying they're not going to. They're just, they're just explaining what they've gone through for processes.
Can I comment?
Yes.
Hi, sorry. So, just a couple things. First of all, I want to say thank you. We, you know, we tasked you with looking into it and you've done that. And so I appreciate that you've done what we've asked you to do. No decisions have been made at this point. I do think that notifying residents, you know, no matter what we do moving forward, is a, is a good practice. Much like when, when towns spray for mosquitoes, you know, it's the same sort of idea. And I know that, again, this is somebody else who isn't in the room, I think. But one of the members of the Energy and Environment Committee has offered to do some research on this very issue. So I think that they would be, I don't want to speak for him, but I think that he would be very interested in helping us continue to look at other solutions. But in the meantime, because our contract goes, you know, until, or the, the next contract would go until June twenty twenty, I'm assuming that we are contracted currently to spray in June twenty nineteen. Is that correct, to assume that?
July.
Okay, because, because in the, in your report, it had June of twenty twenty, so we're not gonna spray in June of twenty nineteen at all?
Let me double check. But, yeah, I don't have that scheduled as of now, but I've got to double check. You can't say either which way.
Okay. And so then my question would just be, at this point, where, what are our next steps? Would we, because this was, you know, we asked the company that we're currently contracted with to do this research and they, they gave us some great information. Would, would the next step be for the Energy and Environment Committee to maybe do some work? Or at the same time, potentially to send out an RFP to find out, or RFQ, to find out what other options are available in the, in the greater area?
Our current contractor can do all the other ones. But he just, that's why they're providing the cost, so I wouldn't want to break the contract because that would require a penalty for us as well.
How long are we contracted with them?
Till next year.
Okay, so through the, through July or June of twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Child's cancer could be a penalty, too, though.
You can't speak during a meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, do I understand that they would be able to do an alternative method if we ask them to and then would not be breaking the contract?
Yeah, they've, they've, yeah, and with the council, we just, we'd have to find money in the budget to do it.
Okay.
So it's not a, it's not as if the company's not willing to work with us.
Okay.
I have a question. If I, may, Steve, you wrote in your report, they've only found one viable option. Could you expand off of what they determined to be viable?
Yeah, what they said is, the reason why the current method is the viable option is because it kills the plants at the roots. Where current, other options just kill the plants at the leaves. So it's gonna just come back again and grow back up in the same area, whereas now, once you kill it, it kills it at the roots and it dies.
And if the roots are still growing, they're causing cracks below the surface.
Is that, you say that in terms of all, say more, less harmful chemicals then? Those all do the same thing as just hitting the leaves?
That's, that's what they're finding.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
So do you want to send us to the Environment?
Yes, I think, um, I think we should send this to the Environment Committee.
I'll work with the council rep to s- maybe I'll get, I'll get the, um, the representative from the company to meet with the committee.
Yep. All right.
That sound good, counselor? Chi- Madam Chair?
I think that's a great idea.
One more question.
Yes.
Um, so, we haven't had to find money before, so how does that work?
We don't do it at the project.
Okay.
If I don't have the money, I have to take it from somewhere else.
In the current budget.
Current budget.
And then next year would be part of the budget if you do it.
Right, and so the places I'd probably take, I can't pave roads as much, if it goes to a higher level.
And then are you anticipating there might be long-term costs for repairs if those other alternatives don't kill roots?
Yes, and then I don't have the money because I have to take that from them.
I'm just, we need to look at total cost, right? That's on one side.
Yes. Right, and as you know, the budget was just adopted.
Yes.
So that budget goes on from July one till June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Okay.
So the next time we could budget for this is until next year.
So would that, would we, uh, let me just kinda walk through how, the process then. Are we looking to have a, the Energy and Environment Committee take a look? Are they gonna come back with maybe, are they gonna just analyze the options?
They, they can make a recommendation.
And then how do we fold in the money piece?
I find the money and I move it. I have to find it somewhere.
You, you will figure that out, right?
I'll find it. Yep, that's my job, just figure out the money.
Okay.
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 The next item, Town New Market will once again welcome throngs, I refuse the word throngs, of runners and spectators to the community on Sunday, April eighth, two thousand nineteen, with the annual running of the Great Bay Half Marathon and the Beyond the Rainbow five K road race. This is a great opportunity to showcase our beautiful community. While doing so, there'll be some road closures and temporary delays. Downtown will clo- be closed shortly before eleven AM start and will reopen in it or abandon about three PM after the race is completed. The signs will be displayed throughout town with more infor- and more information as we get closer to the race. The other roads that are impacted are South Main Street, B Street Extension, Elm Street, Cedar, Biscasket, Salmon, Dame, uh, Bay Road, Cushing, Loverland, Lamprey, and Sanborn. So just wanna get everybody on board that that's gonna be going on that weekend. As the council is aware, we're going to have MRI review our current finance structure at the Laceda Share Services. MRI will assist, will sign, uh, sorry, um, Michael Evergram, an experienced New Hampshire School Business Ministerator, and Betsy McLean, experienced New Hampshire Municipal Finance Manager, to review and critique the current shared town school finance management structure employed in the, uh, Town of New Market. Engagement will entail three steps. The consultants will consult by phone with the school superintendent, others, and I, as directed, to get a sense of the issues, concerns, and problems. Uh, focus areas that precipitate this engagement. After completing the consult- consultations, the consultants will prepare and distribute a list of focus areas and specific questions they'll address in their final report. Final report, the superintendent and I will review, edit, and expand on their list of, at their discretion. The final list of questions and focus areas will include, by reference, into the scope of work which I have. The consultants will meet with the shared finance director and others involved in the various fun- financial operations of the town and school district. They ask questions, gather data, invite input, and observe operations as necessary to understand the current organizational and operational structure. And approve and then address the concerns and answer the questions identified in step one. The consultants will then meet with the superintendent and I, along with any others that they determine appropriate, to return, review findings, observation, conclusions, and answer questions. If additional research or studies determine necessary by either the superintendent and I, the consultants will proceed accordingly. Upon conclusion of the critique and any supplemental work that may be required, the consultants will prepare to submit a final report, the superintendent and I, which is also a public document, will be shared with the councils and school board. Um, this project will begin as soon as it's reviewed by the school board. It's under my, it's under my spending authority, so I can just assign the contract. And that is all I have tonight. I do have, I hope I have the MS two thirty-two to sign. Um, that's the appro- uh, actual appropriations. Maybe not have that in front of me. If you can swing by sometime in the next week to sign the MS th- two thirty-two, it's just a state form that we have to say, yes, this is what was approved at town meeting for the budget.
All right, very good.
That's all I have tonight, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report? Sounds like Cass, it looks like you have a committee report. Uh, let me get my head into space. Um, okay, so the planning board met last night and I just wanted to share, uh, they approved the application for a minor site plan and special use permit to, for the one hundred and fifty-foot monopole that, um, uh, uh, AT&T, which is cigarette wireless, is gonna be installing the sites right next to the fire department, so.
It's talent, yep.
Yeah, and so I, I know the lease, uh, has been, agreement's been hammered out, they said. So that's, it looks like that'll all go forward now.
Yeah, just procedurally, once the planning board approves, then the lease comes to the council for approval. So, what this is for the new counselors is it's the expansion of the FirstNet pro- program. After nine eleven, they realized there's a lot of gaps in cell phone coverage in the country. AT&T got a contract with the federal government to try to improve that. That's what they're gonna do, is put a monopole on that location, then it's supposed to improve communications basically between New Market and Durham, and New Market and Stratum, where there seems to be a gap at this point.
Yeah, and besides the, um, you know, a- accomplishing the FirstNet emergency type, uh, or disaster recovery type function, um, the thing that I thought really perked up my ears was opportunities for additional revenue for the town.
Right.
Because other carriers can pig- piggyback on that, that tower. Um, so anyway, yes, so that'll be coming forward. Uh, something else that'll probably be coming before the council as well was, uh, the, the planning board resolved a situation for, um, acquisition of, um, some land right next to the Nature Conservancy, down by Moody Point, between Moody Point and Bay Road. Um, it's that wide swath of area that kinda goes down to the bay. As you come around Bay Road, it's quite beautiful. Um, so they, the actions by the planning committee made it possible to go forward with getting that land into Conservancy. So that's gonna come before the council as well. And I think that's a really great thing. All right, what else happened? I'm trying to remember, there's a lot. Um, oh, so the master plan, uh, they're creating, the, the planning board's creating this, the committee. Um, that's gonna be, um, Jamie and Val from the planning board, and they will be deciding which chapters. And I shared with the planning board the observation about the, uh, Economic Development Study, and that maybe they wanna defer that chapter until after that's done, so, um. Uh, what else was there? Um, trying to remember. I think that was, that was the major stuff. Unless there's any questions? Or feedback for the planning board, so. Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other committee reports? Counselor Finch?
Quick one. Uh, Conservation Commission, the only thing I wanted to mention was that, um, is gonna just, uh, kinda put a plug in for a cleanup of Heron Points on Saturday, April twentieth. Um, and more details will be forthcoming. I think they've already been posted online, but I'll, uh, I'll get the times for that. But that should coincide with the gate being fully installed over at Heron Point, six square feet.
Okay, good, great. All right, seeing no other committee reports, we will move on to old business resolution ordinances in the second reading. Um, so I s- I just need to read the title at this point. All right, so I seek a motion to approve Resolution number twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, South Main Street and Bay Road Water Main's replacement project.
I'll move to accept Resolution twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-two. Second.
Okay, and then we are open for discussion.
Thanks for having me tonight. Um, this is to deal with the, uh, South Main Street Water Main and the, uh, Bay Road Water Main and the Bay Road, uh, Sewer Main. Um, this goes with the vote that was just passed, um, for the ten million dollar bond that we're seeking, actually twelve million dollar bond. Um, the reason, um, I just want everybody to understand, because we have a couple new counselors, that, um, the Water and Sewer Department, um, does a, uh, request for qualifications rather than request for bid, and the reason is for that is it, it makes us available for the most grant funds. And we've done this the same way we did it for the wastewater treatment plant where we received three point seven million. We did it for the water line going up the hill where we got four hundred thousand and for a couple other projects where we get. Because if we don't follow the rules of the state, then we're not able to get the funds. So, we've taken the roster of engineers that were qualified from the state. We direct mail them for people with the, with the RFQ. Uh, we received three, uh, proposals back, Wright Pierce, Fussin O'Neil, and, um, Underwood Engineers. Uh, we, um, brought them in, we interviewed them, and it was determined that Fussin O'Neil, uh, had the best team for New Market, so we selected Fussin O'Neil. We, uh, they submitted a contract which I reviewed. I compared it to other previous water projects and sewer projects to make sure that it's in line. I also sent it to the state for them to review, to make sure that it's in line. Um, and so I'm wishing, I'm asking you to, um, approve, um, uh, Fussin O'Neil and approve the town administrator to enter an agreement with Fussin O'Neil to do the Water Main on South Main Street and the Water Main and Sewer Main on Bay Road.
All right, are there any questions or discussion? Matt, is why I ask. Adam, Weinstein, Counselor Weinstein, do you have any questions or anything? I'm gonna take that as a no.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, sorry, you're on mute. No, I faulted.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I seek a motion to approve Resolution number twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-three, withdrawal from the downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any?
I'll discuss. Um, what this is, is that at one point, the downtown TIF had enough funds to actually pay the outstanding bond related to the, uh, downtown reconstruction from back in the early two thousands. However, the bond is not allowed for prepayment, so we have to, uh, pay it annually without penalty. So we have a capital reserve fund. We set up the TIF that we took all the money and put that in there, so annually I have to come to the council and withdraw these funds to pay the bond payment, so it's just a housekeeping.
All right, is there any questions or discussion before we move to vote? Right?
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, Resolution number twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-four, withdraw from the Town Cemetery's Capital Reserve Fund. A motion to approve?
Move to approve Resolution twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-four.
Great, in a second?
Second.
And discussion?
This is just, uh, to transfer four hundred fifteen dollars to reimburse the general fund. Uh, because there was some repairs that actually, um, that the Pelzars did. It's such a low number, but we don't have authority to withdraw from capital reserve funds. It has to come from the council.
Right.
So, uh, asking for the approval.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay.
Counselor Finch?
I have a comment.
Oh.
Yep.
Me, okay, sorry.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, so I just wanted to say that I appreciated, um, the work and all the pic- the pictures that the Pelzars sent and the work they did, um, at the Riverside Cemetery. Those monuments are beautiful, and so it's just nice to see them, um, repaired and restored as much as they're able to do. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yep.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And Resolution number twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash thirty-five, in support of the CACR eight and local self-government, uh, Counselor Dumont?
I'd like to make a motion that we hold this for a third reading.
You don't really need to make a motion. You can just ask if the, if there's no objection.
No, in that case, if there is no objection, I would like to hold this for a third reading with respect to the fact that there are two new counselors on this board.
Yep, that's fine. Is part of that to make the package from the subcommittee available?
Well, there are two things. First, you all will receive, um, I think what is now thirty pages of basically everything that the subcommittee did, so you have time to review and understand. But also so that you'll have time to read the resolution, formulate opinions as to whether or not you're in support of it. And, you know, have a more clear, uh, reason as to why this is coming forward.
Right.
And you'll have at least a week to review that. Might hold this to actually email it out to you tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Dumont. Everybody is, uh, okay with holding that over, so we can review the material? Okay, all right, very good. Um, we have no, um, resolutions or ordinances, items laid on the table. Uh, any correspondence? New business, number nine?
Yeah. Um, no correspondence at this point.
Okay. All right, so the next, uh, item is the Town Council to consider nomination appointments and elections. Um, so I'm seeking to accept a motion to appoint Wayne Rosa to the ZBA for a term to expire March twen- twenty twenty-two.
So.
Second. Second, okay. Any discussion? Just thank you again to everybody who volunteers for these committees. Yeah, especially multiple terms. Exactly. Mr. Rosa. Yeah. Okay, I think we are okay to vote.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Um, I seek to accept a motion to appoint Chris Hawkins to the ZBA zoning board for a term to expire March twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Oh.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. See, I don't have my little script notes.
Right, that's right. Okay, uh, next one, I seek to accept a motion to appoint Jonathan Sack as an alternate to the ZBA for a term to expire March twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion? Is that for alternate?
Alternate.
I think I said, did I say that? You did say that. Okay. I'm trying to remember where it says alternate on that.
The title. ZB alternate member?
Ah. It says application for appointment to a board commission. Can you point me to where it says alternate?
It's on the agenda as an alternate.
I'm looking at his application.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't put his full, his position on it.
But the position is an alternate position?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a look, um, a few lines down right above where it says state what the new term expiration date is, twenty twenty-one, right above that, uh, alternate position applying for. Is there any work?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so did we have a motion?
Oh, so moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Any discussion?
If it's not twenty twenty-two?
It's not.
Okay.
It's a fill-in for somebody else.
Oh, okay, so finishing on the term cut.
Okay, well, see any other discussion?
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. All right, we do not have any resolutions or ordinances this evening in the first reading and no correspondence to the Town, Town Council this evening. So does anybody have any closing comments?
I have a couple items, see if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, this might be best addressed with the Town Administrator. I know Counselor Weinstein had mentioned it at the figure at our previous meeting regarding that bottom section correspondence to the town. regarding that bottom section correspondence to the Town Council. And then, for whatever reason, it hit me, Counselor Burns mentioned it tonight under New Business slash Correspondence. Have we taken any steps to either address why that's there or maybe further define what we're doing with that?
Sure, the, the reason for correspondence by, to the Town Council is, back in the old days, put it that way, if when people want to address the Town Council, they would send in a hard copy letter. Nine times out of ten now, you receive an email when you, they wanna address the Town Council. We use it once in a while, if there is a letter of importance that comes to the Town Council, maybe from the school board or from another government entity. Do we need that? No. Could have amended. When we were amending the rules, I think I forgot to mention that, to review that as well. If there's a letter to the Camp Town Council that's of importance, um, we usually bring it to the attention of my report. Other than that, eh, if we brought every letter that was addressed to the Town Council, to the council, you'd be having stacks. I, I don't know if the council wants to just remove that from the agenda or not.
My concern was just to, cause I know last time we were kind of, uh, big question mark on it, so I wasn't sure if there was anything that had been taken at this point. And a few others, if you're okay with it.
Yep.
As long as there's no objection. Um, we did change our rules tonight for three minutes of public forum, twenty minutes total. I would request that, um, that.
Fifteen.
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 Oh, sorry, fifteen. That statement that we have at the bottom of our agendas, if we can update that to limit it to, to three minutes.
Yep, that's absolutely, because that's the first things.
Awesome.
Yep.
And then for actual comments, I would like to thank everybody who volunteered for the, uh, elections. It's very nice to see the turnout that we get, because there's a lot of folks who, I guess, um, throughout the past year, I've heard a lot of, uh, individuals say, well, I didn't know that was happening, I didn't know that we were discussing this, et cetera. But for everybody who did come out on voting day, who knew what they were doing, what they were voting on, and then all the people who helped to facilitate that, I think it speaks a lot about our town. I personally think that New Market is a model for the way the state of New Hampshire should run all of its elections. And I just really appreciate everybody who works in this office, you know, in this building, and, you know, are out there for every single election. It, it means a lot to me.
Thank you, Counselor Dumont.
Yeah, thank you to everybody who stepped up for write-ins, because I know we went from being short
Yes.
On several, uh, areas, but it was great that people actually stepped up, and, uh, congrats on the two new counselors being elected.
I have a quick comment, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, well, a couple, a couple of quick comments. So first, I just wanted to echo what Counselor Dumont said about the election process, and, um, I couldn't agree more. I think that, I, I do think that New Market is a model, and it's, um, it is, there's no question, my favorite day of the year is Town Meeting Day. So, um, I, I really enjoy being a part of that every year, and I think that Terry does a phenomenal job organizing, and everyone in, in her office and all of the volunteers are just, um, are really amazing. And so it's, it's, it's a great thing to be a part of. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention was just about the correspondence to the Town Council section on the agenda. I know that I brought it up last time, and I was definitely looking maybe for a little bit of guidance around that. I don't, I personally don't necessarily think that it needs to be removed from the agenda. I think that, um, you know, I, sometimes, you know, we, we, we kind of chip away at the edges of people's involvement in, in our, um, legislative process. And I wanna be, I think we should be wary of that. And so having that there is important for when we do receive information, um, that we want to share. But I do think that we probably should have a discussion at some point, maybe at our next meeting, about what that should be, so that there is some uniformity, um, for when we highlight emails or correspondence, or, you know, what, or letters, whatever that correspondence is. So that it doesn't feel like we pay attention to some items and not to others. Because I think that that's, that's the sense of what I'm getting from some people in the community right now, is that we sort of pick and choose. And I just don't want that perception there. So that's all.
Okay. All right, thank you, Counselor Weinstein, and I think Counselor Cass, you had a comment?
Yes, since I wasn't at the last meeting, which was, uh, Chairman Pike's last meeting, I just wanted to echo my thanks for his service. I've found the last two years that I've been on the council with, and with him as chair, especially, I, I felt like led by example, and really, um, really helped me to understand, you know, what the council was about, where we were going, what, you know, and just how to set a good tone, you know, for, uh, all the topics that come before us and decisions that we have to make. So I wanted to thank him and also, uh, Counselor Bud, who was, um, uh, I got to sit next to, which was really a pleasure as well. So I wanted to thank them both for their service.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, and congratulations too, to Counselor Weinstein and Counselor Burns.
Oh, thank you.
And thanks for stepping up to lead the council going forward.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other closing comments by any of the counselors, we can go ahead and close the meeting.
Okay, adjourned.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
Bye, Tony.
Bye, thank you.
Yep.